Good evening and welcome to the City Council Work Session, October 24th, 2023. I mean, I call meeting to order and we have eight cameras this evening, so we are good to go. I'll start by introducing myself. I'm Happy Short, Mayor of City of Depot Bay. We'll go around and introduce ourselves and then we'll let you folks.
And do make sure you speak in this because if it's behind your computer, they may not be hearing you very well.
Chris, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Chris King, a City Council President and I've been on City Council for about three years, I think. We're about to happen, right? And we appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you.
Well, Graham, I'm a City Councilor here and thank you very much for your report. It was very interesting.
Hi, I'm Autumn Lawson, City Councilor.
Lindsay Bettyfield, City Council. Portland State University graduate.
I'm Rick Basely, City Council, Position Four. Thank you for the report.
And I'm Valerie Sover, City Council, Position Five.
Okay, so all leaders, guys, thank you for being here.
I'll take myself off mute. I'll start. I'm Bob Winthrop. I'm with Portland State University. I'm a senior fellow. And I did the least amount of work on this report of our whole team. So I'm gonna turn it over. I'm gonna let Sarah introduce herself and then I'll come back and I'll give the presentation.
Hi, I'm Sarah Spires. Oops, I don't know if y'all can hear me. I'm Sarah Spires. I'm the Associate Project Manager for the Compensation Team. And so I worked very closely with him to get the data and get the report to you all. And I'm here to support Bob and answer questions as we present to you all this evening.
And so can you see the, can you see the, I'm sharing my screen now. Can you see the, can you see the thing that said City of Depot Bay Compensation Comparison Study? Okay, good. Now, I should note here that the reason I get to go first is because I've been there the longest. And I'm the oldest, so as long, because Sarah doesn't have gray in her beard. She doesn't get there, but she, but Sarah's really the one who's done a lot of work to really kind of get the information that we need. So Portland State University, Center for Public Services, part of the Marco Hatfield School. We like to think of ourselves as praccademic, so we're both practical and academic. I'm a senior fellow. I'm a part-time person with Portland State. Sarah, I have a full-time job as a finance director with a private organization. I used to be the CFO of the Portland Police Bureau. Academic credentials are always important when you're talking about a university, so I've got a master's from NYU. Eileen Casey White, who sends her apologies, has done a lot of work on this study. She's got an EDD from PSU and she has, she did a real, where I did the kind of development of the rubric for how we look at this financially. Eileen did a lot of coming up with the rubric for how we look at this from a comparable, comparable job titles. So we'll talk about matching, but, but a key part of this is one, both the calculation of the financial value of the compensation, but also matching to the right job title. And then Sarah is the one who's done most of the work and she's got her MPA from Virginia Tech and is working on her PhD in something at the University of Washington there. So Sarah, Sarah does great work and we're, we're very lucky to have her. So what is our compensation work? So what, we were approached by Depot Bay to look at this, to look at kind of how are your salaries and compensation in the marketplace? So the reason you want to do this is, are your people paid fairly? Are you able to recruit and retain your people? Those are really kind of the two main questions you're asking. And we use something called the Public Employee Collective Bargaining Act Methodology. We do that because if you were to have a union and go to arbitration, we could just lift what we've done and take it to that arbitration. And so it's a standard way that people are used to looking at compensation surveys around the state of Oregon. We've done a ton of studies. One not listed here, we recently did one with Tillamook Bay Community College. Trying to think. Oh, and I see Lincoln County is there.
We just did a big Curry County study.
Yeah. So, so we do a lot of these studies. We got, we started doing the comparison studies for PECBA, based on kind of some earlier research we did. We're praccademic, right? Practical to the academic. We were looking at compensation and pension issues related to total employer cost of compensation, kind of as an academic pursuit. And then we, we got into this more practical, looking at comparing the market. So what does the PECBA methodology do? So the PECBA methodology is not the cost of compensation to the employer. It's the value that the employee receives in the compensation. So we look at base salary, kind of what everybody thinks of, but base salary is really not, not all that an employee gets. They also get the, something called the employer pickup for the employee's 6% required contribution for PERS. So all, all public employees get PERS. Their, their pension, but there's also a 6% defined contribution. That is, they just put the money away. It grows and you get it at the end when you retire. That's, employees are supposed to pay that, but some employers have picked that up. And so that's an actual 6% dollar value that employees get of actual cash. Things that are not cash is paid time off. So all of us value paid time off. Now, one of the things that you look at is with paid time off, you get paid that at the end of your career if you leave and you have paid time off in a bank. Sometimes you have a limited amount you can accrue, but generally you get paid out your PTO. You, other than some unique characteristics of PERS, you generally don't get paid out your sick time. You kind of use it or lose it. So we don't count sick time. We do count PTO. And then health insurance, the family premium, the employee cost is something we look at. And again, we're not looking at kind of the cost to employer because you can have very different plans. We're looking at what does the employee have to pay? We assume that all of the health insurance is essentially the same. And then whatever the employee pays is deducted from the cost, from the value of the compensation the employee receives. Any questions about the methodology?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I was looking over this ahead of time. I was wondering about why cost of living in various areas when be used to adjust.
Good question.
Thank you.
Good question. So, so here's the thing. We select your market and I'm gonna go to the next slide. I think that's, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to this slide and talk about what we selected. So we said, you know, so, so cost of living adjustments are, are by their very nature, they're gonna be subjective, right? Do you use, you could use the Consumer Price Index to share. You could use the Consumer Price Index Urban. You could use the, you know, it's all, how you generate cost, Consumer Price Index and your adjustment is really subjective in what you choose. And we want to take the subjectivity out of it. So.
I was meaning things like housing costs, which are subjective.
Sure. And, and I think housing cost gets into that. And we don't, but we think it's subjective, right? It's, it's subjective because even if you could say, well, we'll adjust based on the median price of a home and CPI or something like that, we're gonna come up with something that is a methodology that, you know, people are gonna be concerned about. I mean, there's gonna be some subjectivity to it. So the way PECBA says the way you do it is you select the jurisdictions with the same populate, the population three up and three down. That's how the PECBA methodology. But we don't really always want to follow that because that's not always the best for your market because maybe a population center next to you may have, you know, like Lincoln City is part of your, you know, it's not too far away. It's part of the same kind of general region. And Newport is part of the same general region, but they're much larger than you. But where are you gonna hire employees from? And one of the things is, my assumption would be that your employees are either gonna go to Lincoln City or Newport, or you're gonna come from Lincoln City and Newport. So you'll notice here that we have, the way we get around that, the way we don't, the reason that we don't adjust with what we think would be a subjective adjustment is we try to match the labor market either geographically or based on size. So that's how we, that's kind of how we came up with these. Does that, and, and that's the PECBA methodology that, that we follow. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying. I'm still a bit concerned knowing these communities and how different the cost of living are.
And, and tell me where, where you think that, I'm just curious, where you think that Depot Bay has a lower cost of living?
Well, Cannon Beach has a much higher cost of living as does Walport, Rockaway Beach.
Sure. No, I, I, that's, that's clear. And when we were, when we were putting these together, I have to believe, I have to say, I wasn't, I wasn't involved in the initial putting it together. But I assume our normal process is to work with the jurisdiction themselves to, to identify who the best comparables are that most represent the market, where your people are going to or coming from. Is that, Sarah, help me out here.
May I ask a question?
That's, that's exactly right. And we also looked at a prior study done by by LGPI.
Yeah.
So we kind of, we took, we took some of previous studies and we looked at population, region, where have employees in the past gone, and exactly what Bob said.
Mike, let me ask a question here if I could. Councilor, how did you come up with this information that the cost of living is higher in Walport and Cannon Beach?
I didn't say Walport. I said Yaha, everything, and Rockaway Beach.
Question still stands. How do you know that?
From real estate, non-values.
Well, that's not cost of living. That's real estate.
It was going with the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Wrong word.
Well, I guess what I'll, what I'll say is our methodology, and it's explained, is we worked with, you know, we worked with your staff to come up with what the best, what we thought the best picture of the market was. We, and just by the question, you know, the, the, you know, what are you looking at? The adjustment for cost of living, you can do that subjectively. You could say, hey, we think, we think we pay a little less, but that's okay because we're able to get people because we have a lower cost of living. That's fine. We think with our methodology, we're pretty comfortable that we've captured what we think is a good market and we hope, we hope you think as well. So let's go back here.
Bob, this is Kim, if I may. So just so you know, the reason I included, because we talked about this, me and Carla, and partly was because of the last study that was done, assuming that they figured that was a good pool. But we included Lincoln City and Newport particularly because that is where our pool is coming from. Now, the other ones were related to city size and things like that. So we were kind of looking at that. But mainly, I mean, these other ones were good to have. Mainly, I wanted Lincoln City and Newport. And for this recent job, we had somebody apply from Walport. So we felt comfortable that these were probably some of the best. Now, could we, I thought maybe we could try to read them, but they're not those necessarily. So we looked at a large difference.
I guess I would say, I'm really comfortable with the way we selected the jurisdictions. And when I look at this, I think it's a reasonable way to approach it. And I'm, like I say, I'm really comfortable with it. I think anything, anything you do is gonna have trade-offs. And I'm, I'm comfortable with the way that we did this is, is a reasonable way to approach it. But I also understand that it absolutely, you know, others could, could look at it differently and want to make some adjustments. And you could do that subjectively. You've got the information now, you know, so you could take a look at that if you wanted to make some sort of adjustments. Okay, so we had 12 job titles that were considered and we made matches based on years of experience, education, whether or not you, FLSA exemption, so whether or not you got overtime, job duties, whether they were supervisor or not, and then the impact and detection of errors. So if you're a, if you're a building inspector and your building falls down, it's hard to detect that error and the impact is huge. So that's a big deal. But if you're a financial person like me, it's pretty easy to detect that I made a screw up and it doesn't mean that much normally. So that's, that's something that we kind of look at. Any questions on how we selected the matches? Okay. So these were the job titles we selected or that were selected and, and we, we don't select job titles. We got that from you all. Any questions on any of these? Okay. So we talked about the jurisdictions selected and how we select. Normally it's three up, three down, but here we wanted to make sure we got in the market. Okay, so let's look, this is the guts of the report. This is really kind of, everything else is saying, how do you get to this table and how do you read this table? Okay, so we start with, the job we picked here was Lead Wastewater Treatment Plan Operator. So here are the jurisdictions that are the comparables. Here are, here are the job titles that are at the different jurisdictions. So what we said is, at Newport, the Senior Wastewater Treatment Plan Operator, wastewater treatment is what their job title is. And we thought that was comparable to your Lead Wastewater Treatment Plan Operator. And what you'll see in our report, there's gonna be a page that's gonna discuss why we think these are the right comparable matched jobs. So Eileen does a great job at this and Sarah works closely on getting the job descriptions. These are, are, that information is limited to the job descriptions. So we, we, if the job descriptions are unclear, we may ask some questions, but generally we, you know, we're comparing job description to job description on those factors to see if it's a match. Okay, so now we say, okay, well, let's look at the minimum, median, and maximum salaries. So these are the base salaries that you have, okay? And these are the ones in Depot Bay. Then we say, do you pay the PERS that 6%? You guys, the employee pays that 6%, you do not. Okay. The employee insurance, but the employer, the employee doesn't have to pay anything for a family plan for insurance. Then we look at how much paid time off you have, holidays, vacation, holidays and vacation time together. And so we add that amount as well as a, as a additional compensation. And then we look again, this is at the five-year, the 10-year, and the 20-year mark. And then we get a, we calculate that to get these numbers here, which are the adjusted compensation. We compare that to the difference of the average. So the average kind of outliers could impact the average. So the example is used if, you know, 10 of us are in a room and one of them is LeBron James, we're all making millions of dollars. When that's not the case, the median, on the other hand, is, is something we use that's the middle one, the middle job, the middle compensation level. So does anybody have any questions about how to read these?
I don't have a question about how to read. Am I just have another question in general?
Sure.
Versus exempt versus non-exempt, do you account for the amount of overtime that non-exempt, yeah, non-exempt people get in there to carry out their job duties?
Good question. So one of the things I should have emphasized, we're comparing to the salary schedule and benefit package, not to specific employees. So, so the answer is no. It would be different if we'd be looking at kind of what is the average overtime? We do, you know, we've done overtime studies, but is that, but we're comparing to your salary schedule, not to actual people. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, I mean, are, are these folks, what we do say, I, I, I don't remember. In the report, we say whether or not their FLSA exempt generally. Thank you. Sarah's nodding. So generally, what we have in here is, is FLX. So if you look, for example, on, do you all have the report in front of you?
Yes.
If you look on page, page 10, and you look down in the middle under Accounting Specialist, you say, the third bullet from the bottom, you say FLSA exemption. And generally, what you'll find is, we will, we have, we have pretty good matches in most of your jobs. I think, I was looking at that earlier. I think most of them are solid. There are a few that are kind of less solid. We would note if there was a difference in FLSA exemption of, we would note that. But we wouldn't know, we wouldn't have any way of knowing and we wouldn't ask for if they're all non-exempt and, you know, one place gets a lot of overtime, one place gets a little overtime. That's just not something we would look at. Any other questions about, about this, about this slide?
Am I mistaken, or did you compare the Harbor Master with the Public Works Superintendent or comparable? Because these, these other cities that you listed are kind of shy of Harbor Masters.
So let's go. I don't have the report up, but if we look at Harbor Master, Harbor Master slash Maintenance Workers on slide, it's a slide on A4.
Yeah, page 29, if you're having, if you have the PDF.
And so we compare to Cannon Beach Utility Specialist, Gold Beach Public Work Maintenance Worker Lead, Lincoln City Facilities Maintenance Community Center, Lincoln Square, and Walport Public Works Supervisor. So those are the jobs. Now, your question then is, how did we decide on those? Let me do this. Let me, let me actually pull up the, let me pull up the report.
And while Bob pulls that report up, a lot of the matches for Harbor Master and the Harbor Master Maintenance Worker were done in consultation with Kim and the other jurisdictions, recognizing that Harbor Master is fairly unique to Depot Bay. So we looked at other sort of maintenance duties, level of responsibilities, education, is it entry level? So we looked at other aspects of that position to find these matches. Because finding a pure Harbor Master would be hard, but since this was Harbor Master and Maintenance Worker, we tended to focus more on the Maintenance Worker component of that position.
Thank you.
I was just asking further, explain that a little bit. Sarah, if you don't mind, from our discussions with, with this, we talked, I talked to Brady about what primarily Lloyd did down in the harbor. And while he does have some hardware maintenance, our Harbor Master stuff where he does it, he also has a lot of support from Carla, who does the morgue and the waitlist and all that stuff. So the administrative stuff. So he does primarily maintenance down there. If you look at his split, other than the summer when he's focused on people peeling, he's down there trying to keep the harbor in shape. So that's why they primarily focused on that. Because if, if things changed and he didn't more of the administrative, that would make it more, that would make it there. Thank you.
Okay, so, and, got it. Okay. Other questions on this slide? All right. If no question, if no questions on kind of how to read it, the, the summary results are, what we would say is generally, we would like to see these numbers within 5%, 5 to 10%, we would consider the market. Generally, I would expect that you would have some, and I could be wrong, but I would expect that based on these compensation levels, that you would have difficulty filling some positions and that you might have people leaving. You know, and I think that this would probably, it'd probably be reasonable to adjust these salaries to get them more into market. There are things you could do besides that, you know, more vacation time might be helpful. But generally, I would think that these, these are pretty consistently lower than the market.
Councilwoman, are you, what do you need?
Yeah.
Okay, because I have printed out the people that are concerned.
Yeah, can I?
Yeah. Anybody else want to?
I kind of would like to say, so we're lucky right now. We have some long-term staff and, and things like that. Whereas if we had to go out and try to find another maintenance worker, or utility worker, in talking to the other city managers, they're having challenges to run those positions with the certifications that we need. We can fill a lot of positions at entry level. In fact, the city manager from Walport told me that he, he had a guy who did a project in his, in his, in his city and he worked with him and he kind of stole one of their kids working for them. Some adults working for them. So his idea.
So his idea is he doesn't have any certifications or anything like that, but we'll grow and work him into that. But Newport is still having a challenge finding people to fill their utility workers and their maintenance workers both. So we're very fortunate that we haven't lost anybody yet. But I think it would be a challenge to fill this. Even filling our office staff has been challenging. I think we got lucky because we we managed to find two people, but I think that was luck, not anything else. Because one of them lives right here in South Point, and this is like a hop, skip and a jump for her. And the other one lives along the coast and goes to stand the coast and she's looking at maybe having to move off the coast because she can't find another job. So those are some of the things, but those are kind of just the luck of the draw, I think. When we did the previous one, we didn't have much success. So so that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. It is a struggle right now, especially with the public works focused on it because of the certifications. And with us going to level through that piece.
Finding housing has been initiated for our last couple of guys we have found, they have, they found places in Lincoln City, but with a 20 minute response for an emergency water break or sewer problem, then it takes a little while to get here when they're on call.
I'm not saying we're at, I'm not trying to say we're at any kind of risk right now or, you know, things, but I just, it's kind of the reality of where we're at right now. And I look and see how hard that, the others are trying to find positions, like how much blessings that we have, the ones we have.
Mayor, I can make an observation along that line. How this will help us now, but the city of Lincoln City is actually one of the largest owners of residential properties in Lincoln City. And they use that as an incentive to bring people in. They get new hires. They usually end up in the city of Lincoln City on a house. And I think that's a great idea, actually. Be able to operate, you can get somebody in, and and the housing issue is off the table.
And I have a couple of ideas too along that line, but I wanted first to finish that.
Yeah. Well, this is wonderful. Any questions, any further questions on the presentation this evening? Excellent presentation. I think you did a wonderful job, very complete, and this is a lot to think about.
Okay.
Before you guys sign off, I kind of asked a couple of questions, Bob, if you don't mind. I asked a couple of questions about basically what next? Because we were talking, we were like, well, you know what, we don't actually have a status figure in front of us right now to look at. We have, the idea is that, so then I mentioned that to him. So it's really said, maybe you can go ahead and explain what you told me, Bob.
Yeah, I I think we can help you create a new salary schedule if you want to make adjustments. I think that we would want to know kind of what adjustments you think, we we look, this would be these results would be a starting spot, but we might want to think about, you know, what other, what adjustments you want to make in your salary schedule. So when when we looked, Sarah sent me your salary schedule today. It looks pretty. It actually, let me let me pull that up just so you can see what it looks like. Because it 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 really, it was I think it's fine as far as format. I think it gives you a pretty good idea. Let's see where we go. Sarah, do you remember what time you sent that to me?
And I think one of the other things why you're looking at this is that at the point that we gave him that information, he hadn't had a cost of living increase. So that was, that is going to change some of these percentages a little bit, yeah.
Job description changes.
Well, the job description changes sort things out more along the line of what we, what we need in these, in these roles. They like, for example, you know, have a, they're based on certifications. So you would want to look at salary schedules for people who get their certifications to get an increase because it's a lot of time and effort and we need it. We need those certifications. Otherwise, we're going to have to take time off or call. And then we burn them out. So we don't want to do that.
Did I miss something or did, or maybe I was floating? Do we pay for certifications? Do we offer incentive pay for certifications or?
It's part of the job description, but they did get a merit if you pass any exam. And you pay for the exam and if you pass the exam, then the city pays for it. So it's kind of a carrot. If you don't really study, you know, lose money. So this way you're investing in your test. And you do get refunded if passed.
But the percentage we usually do is just a 3%. So that's not a huge jump for the effort and time that they put into doing this. And while we pay for it, they do spend a lot of effort and time on that, so. And I saw the math today that our public works supervisor has to do, even pass a level three. And I was like, oh my God. So not easy. They have to do a lot of calculations by hand.
Yeah. And in public, so the state and DQ, the public health and the wastewater side of the state, which is DQ, they mandate cities have certified operators to work for, to get public health. And you're determined by a survey they do on what levels you are for your operators. So we're, we're pretty much a level two throughout. And we're moving to a level three at our wastewater treatment. But our water plant could be moved up to a level three also, but right now we're at two in coal, in the field of water, in the field of sewer. And then we're at two at treatment of water, but we're moving to a three at wastewater. And then we have to have, like, I also have to do inspector backflow, cross connection.
So what's triggering that? Is it population?
No, it's, it's technical equipment at the
So fancy.
It's the new, yeah, we're right on the verge. And then we go, our grease press.
The screw press.
And then are we taking advantage of all of the sending to conferences?
Well, when we can, they have done, and when they can get away, it's hard for them to get away. So same thing. And I don't want to leave my team and admin team out of it. They don't have to get certifications, but their plates are really full. So I'd like to send them to things too, but it's just, we're down on staff member right now and we have both of them, you know, doing the two jobs. So this is what happens when we're down. I mean, just these things happen. But this is all that stuff that we factor into. So, and I think he has it up now.
I do. So so this is, this is the salary schedule. You're adding step G here. What we might suggest, we probably, we would not complete this with names. We would look at what your kind of your steps. Step A through F, what we think kind of the right number should be based on the market. We'd look at an average of the different jurisdictions and come up with something that made sense, that you could then approve if you, if you wanted to. I, you know, I don't think it's, it's math. I don't think it's a lot of, I don't think it's a lot of detailed work. It's something we could do, but it's also something that you could easily do yourself.
So I have one more question on the math and stuff. So our numbers have gone up because we've done the total, the increases and all of that. But are we still going to be comparing apples to oranges? Have, have the other peoples' figures gone up too? I mean, the timeframe of the survey.
When did we collect those, Sarah? August, right? You were getting a lot of the salary stuff in August?
This is salary, we use salary schedules from July 1st, 2022.
I mean, when you got the job descriptions from YonHots and all that salary information from the cities. Because she, she was asking if those included any cost of living increases, and I don't know if we have that answer.
All, they do not. We got the salary schedules dated from all jurisdictions for fiscal year 23. So if we were to help with salary schedules now, we would look at the current fiscal year. So it would be comparing July 1, 2023 salaries across the board. Because right now we're looking at 2022 salaries.
But but we're looking at 2022, those salaries effective July 1st, 2022 for all jurisdictions that are in the study. So it's comparing apples to apples. If we were to put the salary schedule together, we, we, we would scope out how we would do it. Because I'm not sure we'd want to go back to everybody and and recollect the salary schedules. We might just ask them what, you know, how their salaries adjustments have worked since, you know, 2022.
Or you're going to look at their budgets?
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions for these folks? Thank you very much. And and we will get back to you on whether we're going to need a salary schedule from you.
Sure. And yeah.
How long, how long do you estimate something like that would cost? For how long would it take and cost? All day, Bob.
I think to do it right, you know, you're putting me on the spot a little bit. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna probably say probably around a thousand to two, a thousand to $2,000. And Eileen is gonna, and Eileen is gonna kill me when I say that.
Yeah, because I recorded it, Bob.
It's okay. I mean, just, you just, I guess at it, you know, that, just to give us some sort, it's not going to be like $10,000 more.
Right. No, no, I think, I think probably closer to the two than the one, but but nothing, nothing crazy like that.
Okay. And how long would something like that take?
Probably let me say a couple of months, maybe a month, six weeks.
Okay. Okay, just an estimate.
Yeah, I think all that sounds right because where we would start is for some of the jurisdictions you all use, we have pretty good relationships with them. And for some of them, we don't. So we would start to see what data do we already have. And kind of the sticking point for most of our projects is if a jurisdiction is harder to reach. And then we make the decision, do we keep going with them or do, do we have enough to get y'all what you want in your salary schedule? And that can kind of like sway the timeline, like, oh no, we really want Rockaway Beach, but they can't get us data for two weeks. Do we want two weeks bad or are we okay not including them?
Thank you.
Okay, folks. So I think, I think this is very complete and I really appreciate all the hard work that you did for us because it's, it's a lot of good information.
Thanks. And even though, and like I said, even though I was the one doing the talking, Sarah did, Sarah did all the work.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sarah was a pleasure to work with, very, very fun to work with.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi. Bye.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you're the one who's supposed to say thank you and you do such a great job.
I thought I did, but maybe I did.
You did. You said you did excellent job.
All right, let's keep going here, guys. Okay, so my brilliant question to our recorder is none of these things are reflected in our budget. Right. So do we have to reconvene the budget?
No, we wouldn't need to look at the percentage of changes. And then if it's under a certain percent, we would just do either a resolution or we would need to do supplemental, but we wouldn't have to reconvene the budget, maybe. You guys have that before you do that.
I would love to see a spreadsheet with current, with real information, like the current information, you know, after the increases that we already had, the adjustments.
I already have that.
Okay, cool.
But if you want to see, I mean, that's just what we've already.
And then taking it one step further, we need to have them talk about revenue opportunities. I mean, I'm all for paying staff more money, absolutely. We want to keep that. We want, we don't want to lose anybody. But we also have to figure out where the heck the money's going to come from. So we've had a lot of ideas we've tossed around and that's a work session that I'd like to see us get serious about.
Well, as I was reviewing the budgets today, we do have lots of contingency in our budget to cover any increases that we consider. But I think what we need to do also is convene an executive session to go over the numbers and how we're going to do it. I could bring it up to a couple of settings. So maybe that would be our next.
Well, we can, we can have an executive session to do that. We can have an executive session to discuss conditions of employment with an employee. But we, if we do a discussion, discussion for the salary schedule, that's a different session.
What's the, what are we doing here? Are we, because what I'm hearing is that we just got this compensation study. I don't feel like we've had a chance really to digest it and to think about it. I think that, and and we need to do that. But we need to have some facts and figures. We need to see where we're going to get the money from. I agree with that. But that it is this just going to happen within 30 days or 45 days or what, what, what's the goal?
I don't think there's a timeline on this, but we do need to move on it because we are deficient. We are always challenged with hiring folks and so having some proactive action on our part shows that we are interested in helping our.
I think, I think we should have some memos. But yeah, one of the things I'm going to want to see is the impact in terms of dollars. If we are to move to bring our compensation more online, are we going to the median, are we going to the top? We don't even know where we're going with that yet. And when we do arrive with that, we need to look at what that's going to cost in terms of our budget. Because we're spending, what are we spending? About $1.2 million a year in, in salaries and compensation? Something like that. 1.4? So we, we would want to find out, is this going to drive it to 1.6 or $2 million? And within our current general fund, how that is going to be handled because this idea of revenues, it's going to take some time to develop revenues. I hope our staff helps us out on this in as, in as much as they can, because I believe their salaries depend on that. But we, I think this thing on revenues is really important. And I believe that we can find all the scratch we need to make this happen in there. I also think that the first thing we should do, and and I don't think that we should just jump in and say, yeah, we're going to, you know, spend all this new revenue. I think, I think we can do things like breaking our benefits into line first. And then taking it step by step on, on pay increases. And do this real soberly and deliberately. I've seen this council rush in, and this is no, not this council, I've seen other councils rush in and overnight just walk in and say, we're gonna, we're gonna do this. And, and, and that's not the way that I, I, I feel we should avoid that.
We're not. You have got to study this. What, what, what do you think the first steps should be?
I can't put together a memo saying where we're going, budget impact, if I don't know what your direction is. I mean, are we saying go across the board and do all of these things? What do you, I, I can't give you a bunch of let's just say that I don't have the time to put together a bunch of budget scenarios for you. I mean, what direction do you want about what do you want to see? And then we can put that better for you.
Could we do a spreadsheet with the minimum, the medium and maximum for each decision? That shouldn't take too long. That could help you work on that.
As in current or, well, that's, that's, that's easy. I have that. You know, we have that, but that, that only tells you the 1.2 million, if, if thereabouts per payroll. So you already have that information. But if you're looking at what each individual person is making, our accounting specialist has been working on that and she's had a good few records because things have been not as well tracked as they should have been. So, but she's been working on pulling that information and I can find out from her where she is on that. But we can get you that if you want to look at it from that standpoint. Otherwise, I can give you the chart that I used in the budget that you all got to copy up.
But this is from 2018?
That's an old one, yeah. That's just the old one that I, we have a more recent one that shows some of the other stuff. That's just the old one that I, we have a more recent one that shows some of the other stuff.
Yes, so it seems like we need another work session.
Right.
After we've repeated things more, but.
We need more information.
But the, yeah, with more information, but the other thing, I think what we really need also is to consider another position. I'm concerned about burnout, and we've talked about this with, with the city reporter position. And I have no idea how much overtime, I didn't realize it was a non-exent position. So, and she's working her butt off, she's language, she's working very hard, and a lot of extra hours, and, um, so I think we also talked about having a different assistant position, maybe, and I, this, my idea was, because Carla has all the expertise, and this assistant reporter bring up some of her time to be, you know, doing this, you know, instead of doing minutes, for example, doing, you know, hiring somebody to do that. And I don't know where that would fall in terms of reducing the amount of overtime, and I don't think Brady, you got, is it, I think Brady is non-exent as well.
Both of us are exempt, which means we don't get overtime.
That's inherent.
Except, but it was wrong.
That's inherent in the report.
She fixed it, I didn't show that to you, she fixed one page of it, but they, they said it didn't matter what she did to that page, so we are both exempt.
Okay, well, I, that's what I thought, that was surprising, but in any case, burnout is real, and, um, it's awful to have to keep on hiring people when you get really good staff. Brady's been here for a long time, but we can't afford to lose him, we finally got him an assistant. So that would be another consideration, keeping staff by reducing the amount of workload. So anyway, I think, I don't think anybody here would say we wanna lose staff, and we, I think we all need know that we'd like to make sure our compensation rates are fair to key people, but I also agree on the revenue side, and I am ready to move on that. But it's not either or, I don't think, but timeframe is an important consideration.
Yes, Kevin, you mentioned, we've, look, there are two people, one is to replace Stephanie in the labor position.
Uh, let me explain that, that was one of the things I was going to get counsel feedback and direction from on this. So there has been several mentions of the additional staff person in the office. However, recently, the Emergency Preparedness Committee has kind of talked about having a part-time emergency preparedness person. And when they talked to me about that, I thought, well, you know, maybe the part-time person is a full-time person, they could do the part, part-time work in emergency preparedness, safety coordinator, I think is kind of what we did some research on. And then another part could be doing things like coming to the meetings, handling the minutes, because I do all the council minutes, and parks, and all these things. Carla does the harbor and planning, and keeps her planning busy, so, you know, having somebody that can sit here ten minutes while I'm engaging with you, because I have to really listen to the meetings twice. So, because if I'm talking and engaging, not taking notes, I have to go back and listen to the meetings. So the other thing we thought about is maybe some co-enforcement element. We had a recent complaint, a very serious complaint, did you guys all get it?
Yes.
No.
Yeah, from.
About, about the.
From the short-term rental, yeah, I mean, and all I could do is say, we have nothing on the books, that allows us to address. A lot of other cities do, but if we did that, if we added that element, that is another big piece of.
When working with contractors and all that.
Yeah, and then working with contractors, exactly.
Right.
Did you not get it, Kevin?
Yes, I forgot it.
It was a private person, it wasn't a private person.
Yeah.
He sent three of them. And I just, I, he said, we, we feel for him, but we have no mechanism.
This was the first time we're hearing about the different kinds of staff person, so.
That was just an idea, Council Rec, I'm just, I just wanna say, this just came up recently, as an idea from them. And we, I thought, like I said, I was floated by you guys, you haven't done anything, I wanted to see what you thought.
No, just add to that, our particular committee is currently meeting twice a month. We now have homework assignments, Lindsay, you don't know about that. So we're, we're doing everything we can do, but we find that we don't have someone to implement things. We have all these ideas, but we don't have the focus to implement them, and so that's what we really need to do. We're just, you know, spinning our wheels right now to try to make sure that we're getting things done, and.
I'd really like to hear from staff, too, I think you all, you guys are the boots on the ground, and you know what we, what, you know, what we need, and, you know, you could maybe give us some suggestions on how, what, what we can provide to you that will make you even have your, you know, more efficient. Is it people, is it more train, you know, whatever. Don't you guys have a weekly meeting or something? Yeah, just getting some feedback of that, how, how we can make it open smoother.
Do we need more people, you know?
Does, does anybody wanna speak?
I fear we don't need to put people on the spot now.
Not right now, not right now.
What can we do?
We'll do whatever. No, just kind of keep it.
Do a survey.
Um, just, you know, are Paul willing to take you, you know?
A survey, great.
Sure.
So you're basically looking at what do we need?
Uh huh.
One thing about, like, the crew, even in the office, we're, we're basically a skeleton crew. So somebody takes vacation, you're, you're down, now if somebody gets sick, you got one person carrying the whole load. So that's kind of where we're at.
Uh, Mayor, yeah?
Yes.
Thank you, Paul, and I think that's like, you know, really key evidence that we need to hear, because we're talking, we talked about hiring people as assistants, or, you know, to run the, the emergency program or something like that. That's exactly what I'm worried about right there, is we are so short-staffed. You have vacations, and it's like kind of running a small police department, and their own is in trouble in that sense. But, you know, I, I was interested in what Counselor Rec said, and I pretty much agree with her on everything she said, but, one of the things that I recently did there was, and it was, it was inappropriate, because we couldn't have done it, but I made a motion to do an RFP for a person to run the, uh, the salmon bake. And that aside, because, you know, we don't own the salmon bake, we can't hire anybody to run it. The idea of doing RFPs and bringing in part-time contractors, I think, could be a safety valve for us, rather than putting on full-time employees and taking on the burden of workers, healthcare, all of these expenses that are, are, put a lot of pressure on the city budget. For example, if we wanted somebody to run the, it's easier to find somebody to run the salmon bake and emergency planning than it is to find a city reporter slash administrator to do that work, because they, she just can't do all of this, and we understand that. But I think we should look at, at doing RFPs for part-time people. You know, as I go through her job description here, I see that she is gonna be managing and coordinating projects and programs. Well, that's why we need to bring RFP types in. Prepare grant applications and administer grants, well, that's why we put grant writers into the budget. We are already hiring people to do some of these things, and we need to make sure that we spend the money on it. That rather than bringing in additional people, because we, we have to look at the long-range costs. Long after we are gone here as city councilors, we will have saddled future city councilors. We're struggling with the same revenues that we have right now, because we have no way of substantially increasing them, because we don't have any property taxes. By saddling these future councils with all, with new people, it's gonna be tough. And I've noticed, and maybe our city supervisor can address this issue, that our parks are being mowed and taken care of by outside help, which I'm all for. I, I, I think we should be doing that kind of work. If we can job stuff out rather than bringing staff in, we should do that, we should look at that.
Unfortunately, when you bring in part-time staff, we've got very technical jobs here, and you cannot train somebody in a week.
I'm not, I'm not talking about technical jobs, I'm talking about running a salmon bake, running.
We, we're, the salmon bake's over with. We're talking about, we need staff in this office that we can train up to.
Oh, I didn't know that was over, I thought we were still discussing it.
I sent, I'm currently, Council, I sent, I sent email out a couple days after the last council meeting, and said, just based on the last council meeting, I would not be ready for the salmon bake.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
I'm more concerned about having water operators trained.
Yes, we need technical people, best of people, and you cannot train them in a week, a contractor.
Well, I'm sure.
And then, as a contractor, you've got six months, and then they're out of here, so no. We need technical hired staff.
If I might, Mayor, um, so one of the things I'm thinking about, and this is in no way saying, oh, gosh, I don't wanna do this, but if you talk about bringing on new taxes, that requires more stuff from us that needs.
Yeah, we probably go over the budget.
You know, so, um, it's just one of those things, it, it, revenue is going, you can't disassociate revenue from the impact it's gonna have on the office staff, or the, or what it works at, so.
Right, you can't not get revenue because you're worried about some industry.
Exactly, and I'm with you on that, because I think, I, I'm not supposed to necessarily have an opinion, but I think we do need more, so. But, you know, my thought is like, oh, gosh, okay, this is great, and how on earth are we gonna handle it in, in the house when we're only doing all this stuff?
Well, it's basically like make sure every franchise space is up, is maxed out to move.
Oh, we will, but we've got contracts that are like ten years old.
So what's our next step then? Is that we're gonna compile information. We're gonna compile, we're gonna put together a spreadsheet of current employees, what everybody's making, and then we're gonna have the minimum, medium, and maximum as a salary result.
My, my council, we have the, the median.
The median, the median. Just the only, we have the median, not the lower.
The median.
Okay, we, we will give you the thing that he was showing you, which is what we use right now.
Yeah.
That we already have, and I, again, I'm not sure where, um, she is with that compensation thing from, because she's been doing two jobs, so.
But, but what we were saying is, whenever you have that, then you're gonna see.
The median.
The median, what it would be, gave the medi, median increase.
Oh, you want me to, to figure out what it would be if you gave the median increase?
Yes, right, yeah.
Median increase.
No, across the board. Isn't anyone interested in the salaries that's scheduled from PDX, the, that he mentioned, the two thousand dollars?
I don't have more than.
I think we can have.
Okay, okay. Do that.
Okay.
Did any of the other staff wanna speak before, before we, uh, you guys talk.
I'll speak. I thought we couldn't speak, I thought, I thought we were allowed to speak.
Council gets to decide.
Um, I appreciate the fact that we don't wanna rush into anything, and we wanna make the right choices. But before we're talking about adding to staff, I wanna make sure we all know that the staff that's here now has waited over a year for this survey to be done, that's a long time.
Particularly the ones who recent, who got their jobs redone after I came over last year.
So, I mean, I appreciate where you guys are coming from, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood the justice.
We have programs.
We've been a long time at UGA, maybe. But if I can help, move along, we'll get that spreadsheet prepared.
Good. Okay, should we set another council meeting then?
Yes.
In one.
Another work session?
Or another council meeting?
I think we'll just do another council meeting. Um, we'll just, we'll try and have it by the middle of November.
But we should probably have a, the reason I'm saying work session is so we can concentrate on this and not have it as a part of a longer meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of worried, our meetings have been ten days or longer, so, at least with material and.
And then, and then, can I speak a little bit?
Yeah.
What Diane just said, um, that would be, we must at least do a partial, i- if we have it in the budget, without straining it too much, um, while we take a longer period of time maybe to adjust it up, maybe during our next budget year or something, which comes up in July again, I don't know how to do it, but let's take a look at maybe what we can do.
Like, like do the benefits first?
Benefits and what we can do now salary-wise within our existing, not maxing out our contingency or anything.
Pardon me, Councilor, do you guys think we don't have good benefits? Because I hear from our staff all the time, we have great benefits.
I can certainly see. You're good with the benefits.
Yeah, so they're not, none of them have ever mentioned to me that they want those done.
We got good benefits.
Yeah.
I, and I think.
Okay.
But the, but the idea of, you know, maybe.
Okay.
Well, I just want, I just wanted to speak to the benefit package. I know that the salary survey is not taking into consideration our plans, that we have an excellent medical package, like.
Great. It does take it into consideration, isn't there?
Well, not the plan.
Oh, okay.
It's just how much an employee pays, and not only do we have a super plan,
Right, 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 right.
we also don't have an out-of-pocket expense, so we definitely really appreciate our benefit package.
Yeah.
So it's just getting us up to the medium. In the salary salaries, so, so what we can do then.
I think that would cost, but I do think we need to discuss, instead of just doing a blanket median, which I can show you, um, I think there needs to be some adjustments to that, I think that some of our folks may do not just start, they need to go to the median, they need to go higher, and some of them may not need to go.
So we need your recommendations. So let's just get a synopsis, I hope, this is what they're making. It's gonna take some work, we've gotta do.
No, no, it doesn't work. I can help you there, I'm just trying.
Well, then I also can sort of.
I'm, I'm just saying that I think we should do it as soon as we can.
Yeah.
Uh, emergency healthcare and the salary is coming down November, so pretty much, we have a meeting on the sixteenth of November, and the thirteenth so far.
Pardon me, Councilor, I missed the first part, you're talking about the, uh, like, uh, emergency preparedness? Oh, okay, right, on the, the thirteenth.
Yeah, the thirteenth is radio training.
And then the twenty seventh.
Um, the C R T person we're trying to get her to talk to, and so those days are tight, but.
It's Monday, Monday.
Well, the sixteenth is a Thursday, though.
Um, the six, um, the, um.
Sixteenth of November?
Uh huh.
Um, I will be in Colorado, from, reluctantly, I might add, from the eleventh to the eighteenth.
Be long.
Yes.
Why reluctant?
I don't wanna go. I'm on, I'm on vacation.
You're on the tsunami.
When I'm here, I'm on vacation, so, well, I'm taking my mom back to see my sister, and snow.
So, um, maybe, maybe this is a, needs to be an executive session, but I, I don't know why, um, our, one of our staff persons left, left, and what that was about. And would that help inform this conversation or not?
Are you talking about the office staff who would have left? Can I, can I say something about that?
So McDonald's starting salary is eighteen to twenty dollars an hour, which is more than the position that we're trying to fill right now.
Which is which position?
Utility billing offices and stuff.
You, you would make more starting off at McDonald's.
What if we had a, a bonus, a signing bonus? Is that good, go on?
We need to really analyze all of this, so, um.
How are we handling this position now? Who's doing the work for this?
Uh, it's split between Diane's doing primary, because she's doing the billing right now, but Carla's been picking up some of the slack too.
Yeah, give us your position.
Did we get your attendance?
We did, actually, I, I said it was kind of luck that we did, we got two really good ones I'd love to hire. Um, but I'm only at my mom, and I will offer her the job tomorrow, but she's gonna be, I mean, we're all very happy with her, so.
But there's a learning curve.
Okay, when are we going to meet? When do we want to meet?
How many, how much time do you need to get information?
How much time do you have to give me the compensation, where you're at on that? How much time do you have to calculate?
We're talking about the current salaries, and then what it would be.
What they're making right now.
To the median and high, just the.
To the median.
Yes.
Yes, I, I can do the calculations, I just need the data.
Yeah, I've got, I mean.
Cause you're billing right now, so.
Yeah, I am doing utility billing this week, but I would say by next week.
So. Okay.
Let me ask you this, Recorder, you, you are the expert on all things budget for us, but if we're doing about one point four million in salary right now, and we go up about twenty percent, and, and the salary ranges overall, that's gonna be about three or four hundred thousand dollars. Do we have that in our general fund right now to?
Well, we wouldn't take it all out of the general fund, because our employee work is split between streets, water, stores. We wouldn't take it out of all of those funds, and.
Is there much, if, do we have?
We have enough contingency, yes, sir. I, I budgeted a little leaner, I tried to budget a little leaner, but it's separate from the process, but we, we've got some good contingency. we we've got some good contingency.
Good.
So, do you think the second week of November would?
December's gonna be long.
Oh, she's leaving the eleventh, you could do it.
Yeah.
Like, our next meeting is the seventh, right?
Right, um, we have an hour before that with uh.
The water treatment.
Mm-hmm.
So what about the days following that meeting?
Um, Diane?
I just realized, I'm gonna send the guys out to do reads tomorrow, so I should have done tomorrow. I can probably get you that information um first by the end of the week.
I didn't see that on the job description.
That's cause it's on the utility billing position, because it. I know, I do it too right now, that's right.
So do we wanna do Wednesday, the eighth?
Sure.
Would that work?
The day after, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the last meeting, hmm?
Oh, Friday.
But.
Second. Um, that's Thursday and Friday, like the ninth is the.
One good time, I do.
The ninth?
Hmm?
The ninth is thirteen?
We have our day at three.
No, no, we have to be here.
Minutes?
I don't have anything on there, I'll look.
So I can tell my mom that she can go to Colorado without me if she's like, really want me to stay.
No, no way.
What about Thursday, the ninth? Let's everybody's good.
Thursday, ninth.
I don't have.
It sounds good.
Somebody's slacking.
Three?
Five.
Five. Five, five again.
Uh, so you wanna do it November nine?
Nine, nine, at five?
Five, well, okay.
Is that work for you?
All right, I know, would you, uh, does it, isn't it helpful if I send out this calendar in March, November?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
Do the poll.
I think there's probably some already.
Okay.
So I have to work, so I can't get that.
Thanks for bearing with me, Mayor, I found that uh email that uh.
Okay.
I sent out.
We're done. Okay. After that, it's just, you know that about you, and she's done, she's done, I have to do it.